Good evening. I'd like to call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, July 6, 2020. To order, if you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the room of silence. I'll ask the Fire Chief, Chief Bodine, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the fire department, and the United States of America, fifty-one hundred and fifty, which is thanks one nation under God, in the soul of the Constitution.
Thank you. Until further notice, we keep our members in the staff safe and to comply with our State 91-1, the state of emergency and government's orders restrictions on public gatherings, town of Alton is moving from an in-person meeting to remote audio participation. To remotely attend the meeting, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For telephone access and remote access instructions listed under news and announcements on the homepage, or telephone with Selectmen's Office, (603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229. We need AM for 30 PM, but dialing code and meaning ID for each Selectmen's meeting. There continues to be no public input at this time. If you wish to have something read into the record, please call the Selectmen's Office at (603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229, or email the selectman at selectman@alton.nh.gov, or mail a letter to the Board of Selectmen at POY659, Alton, New Hampshire, 03809. The comments, questions, or concerns will be read at the next available meeting and answered at the meeting or the next available meeting. Gentlemen, as you know, we did recess down on Depot Street after meeting with the Highway Agent. I am back into the meeting. I'd like to bring back up Depot Street and get your comments or concerns on it, and possibly a motion to approve the realignment of the spur road that comes off Depot Street so we fix the drainage issues and everything.
Yes, sir, Mr. Holt. I was activated, and everything sounds great. But again, I have nothing to eat in writing. Should we? I think there should be a laid-out plan, and then it should be built to that plan.
Good, Mr. Roberts.
You go having prints drawn on these roads and stuff. We've put our faith in Kenny over the years. We go having prints and stuff drawn. You're adding twenty, thirty, forty, fifty grand in this road.
I'm talking, I think that can be done in-house. Do you have a plot plan? A pipe? It's gonna have to have some elevation somehow. That should be on there. Where the catch basin is going, what size pipe, where it's going, what the road realignment's gonna look like. I mean, right now, everything sounds good, Mr. Chairman, but if it ends up getting built, it can't. That's just the way I've always operated personally. And if that was my personal project, I would do it.
Well, I really don't have just access to it with the rest of the crew. No, I'd be on a good job on roads without the prints, without drainage and everything. I think we should just let them do it.
Did you get Kenny on the plan?
A lot of these town, a lot of these town roads are in pretty good shape, thanks to the town crew and Kenny laying them out, setting them up and stuff.
Mr. Roberts, are you there with us?
Yes, I am, sir.
Do you feel that for an in-house plot plan, how are you gonna set the roads, set the drainage, to have on file?
I mean, I can do that, but you gotta understand, every road that I've built so far, I mean, and we build entire roadways, we haven't had a set of plans to do them. I'm the one that's laid them out, I'm the one that sets up the drainage. But we haven't actually had a design or, we haven't had a drawing of them, let's say. I mean, like Robert's Cove Road. I know where all the catch basins drainage is gonna go, what the patriminus curves are gonna do. I mean, I know all of that. Do I put it on a piece of paper? No. It's laid out on the road so the rest of the crew knows what's going on, but I really don't have a drawing of it, but I can make a drawing, eight and a half, eleven pieces of paper. I can make a drawing of what it's gonna look like, I mean, for 150 feet of roadway.
I agree with your answer. I can't quite say I can have to agree that we need to go that far on the spur. Just be nice, when we go to the, I'm trying to think of the three letters there. Water park is where it's on right now. We put money away in a water outage condition. They keep G S money. G I S. G I S. When we go to the G I S system, this will all be mapped out. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, you're really breaking up, Reuben. I know you're talking about G I S. If G I S is done, first thing they do is photogrammetry. In other words, they're gonna take photos of the entire town, then they're gonna lay them down on a G I S system. If this is already done, then it'll be laid out that way. One of the good things about G I S, we can take segments, print it, and then draw on the segments, you know, in the future, when G I S comes in, it's gonna be a plus to everything that we have.
Okay. So I really don't have a problem with not doing the plans for it, especially knowing that we're gonna have G I S system come in eventually, it'll be a plus to the town, everything will be located, clean water mains and everything else. So I'll yield the floor again to Mr. Holt, because I think he has another question.
I have a concern, Kenny, about a project you did, drainage, and it's up on Dan Kelly Drive. I happen to live there, but it's the paved section. You did the drainage all up the road and to the left. Now, when it rains, the water's not really going into that much of the drainage, and it's running down the dirt portion of Dan Kelly Road, which it never did before, until you did that project. And there's a drain pipe that crosses Dan Kelly Road just after the pavement, and the water's running down the road over to the edge, and it goes through that drainage system, which it never did before. So was the stuff put in right, the catch basins, the drain pipe? I don't know. We don't have any plans. What I'm looking for is some kind of a plan that puts elevations there, and then what the road's gonna look like, greatness, look the way you said it's gonna, I have no way of knowing. That's my concern.
Do you have any response to that, Mr. Roberts?
Well, what is being looked for is an engineering plan of exactly what's gonna be done. Now, if we wanna go back to engineering and do imprints through engineers to get all these elevations and everything correct, you know, so we have all the reference lines and reference points, and getting a full print on this, then that's an engineering plan. That's what I think should be done, the school street, church street, because of the complication of the plans and what's underground there, because we're doing a water line, also the first mile of Robert's Cove Road, and we're also doing Lily Pond Road, and there's a ledge question in there, that would probably be a recommendation for an engineer. On those roads, yeah, maybe, but 150 feet of roadway, I mean, this is part of, this isn't even part of the four miles that we're trying to build this year, and we have no plans for them. So I'm not, I know what he's, I know what's being asked of, but if that's the way the town would like to go, is to an engineering set of plans, then we should look at, let's survey it, engineer it out, and we'll pay that money to have the spur done, as well as what we're doing with school street and church street. But for 150 feet of road, I think it's a little on the extreme side, but that's entirely up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I don't wanna drag this out, Kenny, but you're gonna have a crew go in there. How do they know where to put that pipe? How do they know what elevation to put that pipe in?
So I'm gonna answer that question for you, because Mr. Roberts is gonna first on right and put it. You have to realize, we're at a zero elevation. We have no room out there. We have no room. We're just shooting it over to the culvert to drain out, over behind TD Bank where the water goes now. But we have zero elevation now. Mr. Roberts, I think, explained that out there tonight, didn't you, Mr. Roberts, or I did?
Yeah, he's gonna shoot the elevation out the other cove.
If you put the pipe in, at zero elevation, I understand, and this is a tough job to make water run flat. And if the pipe is not put in at the right elevation...
Oh, I can't say that, I've gotta agree, Mr. McDonald, on this, he can't see where there's been a problem in the past. Our Joe Road, that's an issue that should be talked about with the Highway Agent and find out what, why it's not doing what it's supposed to.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Entirely of Depot Street is set at zero elevation. The entirety of Depot or Monument Square is set at zero elevation. And I did both of those, and there's not a set of prints that shows on either one of them. And you can go out, you can go out and look at the complications in Monument Square alone for setting it zero elevation to make sure everything drains, and that's because it had to come off the state road. There's a lot of calculations involved in this thing. It's not just, let's go in there and throw it in. And I won't discuss Dan Kelly Drive tonight, but there is, there is an issue going on up there, and I understand what it is, but it has to do with, it has to do with right-of-ways of drainage, so I can't get into that right now.
Okay, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything else? Hey, I would consider a motion to approve the Highway Department to go down, fix the spur road off of Depot Street towards Peori property, a new culvert through there, all the way down to Depot Street, go across the road, and we pave that.
And realign it.
Realign it to the, up to the town property.
Second.
Motion was made by Reuben Wentworth to approve the Highway Department to go in, to use the spur road off of Depot Street, put a new culvert in across the road, also along the ditch line there, regrade it and realign the road, second by Mr. McDonald. Any further discussion? Being on a poll, board for a vote, Mr. Holt.
I have to vote no, Mr. Chairman, because of my...
Whitman?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth? Yeah, votes in the affirmative, three, one name. Mr. Roberts, I will get back to you on item three, okay?
Mr. Chairman, could I just get a consensus about the polls? I know the permit isn't in front of you, but as long as there's a consensus that they'll agree, I'll have the co-op write up the paperwork.
Yes, sir, there's agreement, there's consensus in the board. Reuben, yes, Virgil?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Item seven through 10.
And...
Well, no, that's what you told me about a law, just this one down here.
Just the polls down here, that he explained.
On the spur, no problem. Consensus is approved, Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
Okay, I'll notify co-op in the morning.
Being no announcements tonight, also emerged from the management update, being now the submission of public comments, questions, and concerns not being brought forth tonight. We move on to appointments. No appointments tonight. Move on to old business, Old Home Week Committee established Facebook page.
It's actually a new business.
That's what I said, new business. I started saying old business, I rephrased it, I thought.
This is something that the committee has talked about back in March, and then COVID happened, and everything just, whoa, we stopped meeting. You know, the idea was, thinking back on the conversation, it does seem that social media seems to be the current way to get things out, the best. And we thought, if we had a Facebook page, which I know nothing about how you do that, we might not only be able to get word out to the various things we do when we have a full Old Home Week, and maybe also get some input from the public, so they might come up with some new ideas that we haven't done in the past.
Tell you what, planning board set up Facebook, and it's really worked well.
Yes, sir.
Answered questions, because there's so much misinformation that gets out.
Right.
And now they can answer, they do it right on the planning board Facebook, and Jessica answers them, like, what the rules are, and it's been working really well.
That's another thing, we could answer the public's questions about the various functions. Now, I don't know how soon, because we're not gonna have an Old Home Week this year, and we're kinda late getting started on the Old Home Day, but it is something that we think, for future Old Home Weeks, for sure, it would be very helpful.
Are you gonna have Josh help you set it up?
Yeah. If he would, yes.
April Bold is on the phone. If you'd like to ask her any questions, I believe...
Oh, okay.
Chairman of the Old Home Week Committee, is she here or is she a member?
She's in.
Yeah. Hi, April, are you there with us?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, gentlemen, April Bold is on the phone, member of the Old Home Day, Old Home Week Committee. If you have any questions, I'll thank anybody that'd like to ask her any questions.
Yeah, it's a long time ago since we talked about this at a meeting. Were you planning to set up the page, April?
I can set up the page, or I can work with Josh to set it up, whichever the town prefers.
Okay, okay.
Nice stuff. I'd rather have her work with Josh, because Josh knows the town routine.
He does, he does, yeah. So is the consensus of the board, do we need to through lines, the consensus is fine?
Yeah, I think we should vote it.
So gentlemen, if you want, I would entertain a motion to approve the Old Home Week Committee establish a Facebook page, working with Josh.
Exactly.
Don't move.
Don't move, entertaining them motions.
Motion made by Reuben Wentworth to approve Old Home Week Committee to establish Facebook page with Josh, the IT Director, second by Virgil McDonald. Any further discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth? Yes. April, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hi, gentlemen, moving on, Fire Department bid award, Engine Four. Pack it there, you'll see the chief's written this letter, being July 6, the auction has closed.
The auction closed this morning at nine o'clock. And actually, the bidding got a little exciting this morning, and the final bid, it was fifteen thousand and ninety-nine.
Ooh.
So I'd say it went pretty well. It got viewed seventeen hundred and ninety-four times, and there were forty separate bids on it.
Wow.
So...
So that did really good.
Yeah.
That worked good.
It really got it out there. And, you know, Pat really set this up. He advertised it on the Facebook as well, just to get it out there even further. There were bids out from Connecticut, Boston, so people from around saw it.
Who's the final bid?
The final bid was out of Maine, so...
The amount was, sir, how much?
Fifteen thousand and ninety-nine dollars.
You feel satisfied with this bid?
Hi, you guys set a reserve of ten thousand. It's over that?
It's more than what we expected.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we put it out the way we usually did, it would've been five thousand, maybe.
Well, just as if the bid's too low, another avenue may have to be looked into, as far as that's...
Right, well, so when I wrote this, the bid was still at twenty-five hundred dollars. Everybody waited to the end, they fought, and they got it.
I did that way myself. Gentlemen, do I have any, do we have to put the individual's name on this that we were to bid to, or just the amount?
If you could, do just the amount with the, to the winning bidder.
Fair pair, and see, I'd put the name and everything right out there.
I have a name, it's...
Just to be...
It's Ryan Matthews.
Ryan Matthews. All right, gentlemen, I would entertain a motion to award the Engine Four bid of fifteen thousand ninety-nine dollars to sale of Brian Matthews.
Second.
Motion has been made to award bid of Engine Four to fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars be sold to Brian Matthews, second by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth? Yes. Votes in the affirmative.
With that said, we have a handful of, like, surplus items that are of no use to us, and I think this would be the place to, that municipal site would be the place to get rid of them, when you're talking, like, old suction holes and things that are purpose-built for fire service. I think that's gonna be the best way to do that.
Do you bring in a list of what your surplus items are?
Yep.
And we put it there, but I have to agree with you.
Yeah, I think this is the best avenue to go in the future. There may be something better that we just don't know about, yeah, but this worked very well, and I know it was the first time, but...
Years ago, when I was a young man growing up here, still a young man, the Fire Department used to have an auction, which went on a very long, a lot of times, people would donate also stuff, the Firemen's Association hoses were put out there so people could buy them for their bumpers and their boats.
People used them, most of, everything like around here for the townspeople.
Someday, it might be nice to see if we could do that again, and not, and Selectmen vote to allow use fire, I wish to go to something like that, so you vote two.
So she's surprised how much stuff will be donated to put it on the sign down there for the Fire Department.
Oh, yeah. But, I mean, that's maybe where we get to COVID here.
Yeah.
So, but I have no problem if you could provide us with a list of your surplus you want to put out.
Absolutely.
Does that sound fine with you, gentlemen?
Yeah.
I just like to say... The chief brought this new process up to us, and I applaud that initiative. You know, this is important. New things can happen, and sometimes they're better.
Yeah. I wanna be clear that Pat O'Brien was the one that brought this up, to me, and I'm like, yeah, we'll absolutely give it a try.
Okay, well then, pass the word on to Pat.
Oh, yeah.
You guys work together good, I guess.
Yes.
Remarks go out to Pat for finding this and bringing it up. Okay, gentlemen, move on to new business number three. We're gonna go number three, number four, number five, and number six, because all that is highway departments, we're all the way through.
They're not gonna have a report from the emergency management team?
No, no, sir, I read that off early, there was no management team. Mr. Roberts, are you back on the phone with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Hey, we're gonna move to your first item, Robert's Cove Tree Removal Bid specifications.
Yes, sir.
You've got the floor, sir.
Yep, it's, okay, Robert's Cove Road is approximately 220-plus trees, removing from one end to the other, even though one end's gonna be engineered. We're gonna pull all the trees that we think are necessary out, and hopefully we work directly with the tree company, and we'll remove them as quickly as possible off the site, so there's no clutter that's gonna be there. It's a basic tree removal bid as we've had before in the past.
Do you have any concerns from any neighbors or buddies up there about any of the trees you want to move?
No, but actually, a couple of them have come to us, and we've marked a couple of extras, because they just assumed to have them gone, and we were being conservative. So we marked them to take them out.
Right, sir. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the Robert's Cove Tree Removal Bid specification? The maid to approve the Robert's Cove Tree Removal Bid specification, second by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? If there is none, I'll poll the board. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
I got you. Yes.
Votes in the affirmative.
Hold it quick, young man.
We're gonna move on to number four, Highway Department line painting, line painting bid specification. This is for a three-year contract. Notice today, the crosswalks were done in town, the line was painted on the parking lots, pretty fast drying, some folks were concerned about the wind, but it dried fast, and nothing was over straight. Also, at the emergency management meeting, I will just bring this up, the police chief did talk to, chief, he did talk to the foreman that was on the job about the 3D crosswalks. They have a line painting that creates a 3D image of the crosswalks, so it looks like there's almost a barrier there going across, which will help slow things down. So he is talking that, that request will come in, the chief is gonna meet with Mr. Roberts on about this, too.
Is this gonna include the line painting by the village store where Old Wolfboro Road comes?
Mr. Roberts, would that include line painting of the line by the village store where the Old Wolfboro Road comes down, intersect with Main Street?
Yeah, not all of them were done today, he's gonna have to come back. He's been backed up with, and he still has the same problems we do, or most companies do with COVID. It's the employee issue, he's actually running the machine himself. So he is gonna come back, and there's a lot more that has to be done. So when he comes back, we'll fill in all the things, like such as the town beach and a few of the others, side roads, Old Wolfboro Road, the arrows, no parking areas, fire department parking only, I mean, there's a list of still things that have to be done. The one thing we did put in this bid, this is a three-year contract bid, we did one specification we put in there, we'd like to see all this work done prior to June 15th. So that was one of our requests within the bid. We'll see how many people we get to bid on it, and are gonna follow with it.
Appreciate that. Last year, I believe it was more weather-related than we didn't get done last year, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
The fire chief has a question. Oh, I thought you were...
Scratch and sorry. Two questions, Ken. Being a new guy in the block again, going out to bid for these next two items on three years, has that been proven to be advantageous to the town?
Yeah, what's good about it, there's a contract in the end of this that we're gonna install, and one of the things that it is, it's a, it's a three-year contract with a negotiation for two additional years, and this is a benefit for the company as well as us. It's showing time and time again, now, line painting is line painting. A lot more people request yellow lines to be painted and whatnot, it'd be entirely up to the Board of Selectmen whether or not they add money to this in the end when it comes to budget season, and that will only additional, that would be the additional money used to do yellow lines within the town.
Okay. Add just one other question, Mr. Chairman. I've noticed some crosswalks, we use the white crosswalk system, but some towns, colored ones, solid, some of them, it's in a brick design, but I talked to a Public Works employee, they claim they get longer life out of those. They still do them every year, but I noticed our crosswalks, at the end of the year, they're almost invisible, a lot of them, especially down by the bay, every traffic area. I don't know if we've looked into any of those.
I remember, that has to be all approved by DOT, is that correct, Mr. Roberts, if you went through a solid or brick layer?
Yes, it would have to be approved by them, as well as the paint would have to have a glass bead system put in it for traction, for motorcycles especially, because just painted lines are very slippery. Also, there is a vinyl, it's a lot more money, but vinyl will last a couple of years, where this stuff only lasts about a year. So I think that was a cost-effective thing, and the state's using a lot of vinyl lines, but they impregnate the vinyl into the pavement.
That's something you like to say. There are some items, though.
Well, I just brought it up, something for us to be thinking about, or you, too, Kenny, maybe down the road, and when I see these other towns with these crosswalks, they really look impressive. The Bay Area, a showpiece for the town of Alton, in my opinion. Like to keep, you know, we've spent a lot of money down there.
Hi, gentlemen, do I have a motion to line painting bid specifications?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Reuben Wentworth to approve the line painting bid specifications, second by Mr. Holt. Further discussion? Poll the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Five, Highway Department Stone and Gravel bid specifications, have a new packet for another three-year contract. Gentlemen, I have a question for Mr. Roberts on this, this is pretty routinely in the town, it's been doing it quite a few years now. Seems to work out the town's benefits, like Mr. Roberts has explained, for both, both parties involved, we know how we can budget for the next three years, and secondly is, the contractor knows that he has a contract for three years versus bidding a high price one year, and have to worry about bidding a second year. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
Motion that we approve the gravel contract.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve the stone and gravel bid specifications for 2021, 2022, 2023, second by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? Poll the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth? Yes. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Votes in the affirmative. Trying to hit you. Get it up earlier. Highway Department catch basin cleaning bid specification. You packing that for the last one with stone and gravel? You're packing that for last one with stone and gravel, you'll see the bid specification of the catch base. For three years, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three. Folks, have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
I find it interesting. How many, uh, catch bases do we have in the town of all that we clean?
Oh, my, um, I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't have an exact number right in front of me. But you got to understand, we add every year, so that's why it's bid out by hourly rate and it's not bid out by catch basins. We just run an hourly rate, depending on what the, the town gives us for money, and again, you know, I mean, we did Trash Side Road and added twenty-three. We did thirteen on Gilman's Corner Road. We're doing one, two, three, four, five, six, six on Range Road. We just added one more over off of, uh, off of, uh, Stockbridge Corner Road and Linwood. I mean, we're adding every year, and that's a, that's a, that's a sediment control thing, to be able to control as much sediment as possible so it doesn't get into the waterways. Robert's Cove has, right now, I think there's going to be twenty-seven added that we can see so far.
John, is that a, get for us next week, Mr. Roberts?
Uh, yeah, I can. I'll have Kerry. We actually have it all written down because it's actually given to the catch basin cleaners of where all the, all the locations of them are. And then every year, we just keep adding to those locations.
Do we go, you have one of your crews go out and check like the state does all the catch basins, which ones have to be cleaned?
Right, and what we've been trying to do is set up a monitoring system that we, we know by them going in and saying, all right, if there's only eighteen inches of sediment, that happens for a couple of years. That means we can skip it for a couple of years and catch up on the other ones. And then we have some that are completely full that have to be done year by year. It depends, again, how much sand is used on the roadway and how much gets into it.
Thank you. Mr. Holt has another question for you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Kenny. Uh, I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight. I know we have to clean them. That's the way we've been doing it for years. Uh, I would like, uh, the, the reason I asked for the number of catch bases, as you say, it grows every year, especially with our road management program program. When we get that going, but there may be a point in time where you should be buying your own piece of equipment to clean catch bases. That, that'd be part of your road maintenance program. I just don't know where we stand in that right now.
Right, it's, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about a machine that's, you know, a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar machine for sucking out catch basins. And not that I disagree with you, I mean, it's used once a year usually, and, um, I don't know, it's hard to justify. I'd rather see, uh, it was mentioned that a hot box is coming to you for capital, capital, uh, reserve funds than also a, a shouldering machine that you're probably going to be looking at somewhere along the way, which is actually run by a skid steer, which is another piece of equipment. Those are two real technical pieces that I think should, the town should be looking at now before we get into the, the big machinery. I mean, we already own a sweeper that's, you know, replacement on that's a hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, um, I, I know what you're saying, the town should be, but we, I think there's other priorities prior to that that should be fulfilled. That'd be entirely up to the board.
Chairman.
This was.
I agree, Kenny, but I haven't seen anything or heard any thought about us getting into the catch basin cleaner business ourselves. Now, there's another type catch basin cleaner, other than the vacuum, that's built by Steco Company, and it's a clamshell type with a boom. Goes down, you can do a good job with it. Yeah, the Armage Peel Bucket. And those go onto an existing truck that you have now. Dump truck. Still plow snow with it, you can still haul dirt with it, you can still do everything else with it, and clean catch basins.
Also crack the bottoms of the kit.
Well, the vacuum can suck the bottom out of catch basins.
Oh, this is another, this is another thing we can look at in the future.
That's all we have.
I'm not exactly sold on the sweep. Robertson, thank you so much. Find us a pretty good sweeper and a good deal new sweeper. Sweeping doesn't need to be done. I would rather see another plow truck on the road before, you know, discussion of a versus vacuum. A clamshell would be less expensive, but I, I, the roads that are supposed to be coming to us and has not come for us, the three roads that I've been hearing about. Soon or later. Have to look at adding another truck. But that's for another discussion. Do I have any further discussion on the catch basin cleaning proposals? If not, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Vote to the, in the affirmative. That's the last of the Highway Department. Number seven, eight, nine, and ten are all poll petitions from P S and H. The Dudley Road, O'Neill Road, Stonewall Road, and Prospect Mountain Road. We consider a motion to approve the poll petitions. Chairman, I second that.
We write these, uh, right of ways now, uh, so if underground wires, cables, anything underground, above ground.
Yes.
If they put them in poles, they should only get the right of way around the pole, the five feet around the pole, not go all the way down the line underground. I like the way that's written.
Mr. Holt, did you have a question? Give it a second. No, I think we should approve as presented. Motion made to approve the poll petition for Dudley Road, O'Neill Road, Stonewall Road, Prospect Mountain Road, as submitted by P S and H, seconded by Mr. Holt. Any further, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
They've changed the way they write these. They changed the way they write these right of ways now.
Yeah.
If you read this, they want underground or anything, so they can make conduit instead of five feet on each side of the wires. They want the underground and everything right away, so they can go out and dig underground or anything, and we're losing that right away.
I asked Mr. Roberts about this.
Up in the air, they get five feet around the wires, not on the ground the way these are written. So if they want to go out and put conduit in, they can go right to our right of way without even asking us again. They've changed the way these petitions are written.
I asked Mr. Roberts about this. He looked him over. He said he looked him over. He doesn't have a concern or problems on. Mr. Roberts, is that correct? Vote. I lost.
I have a problem with it because they, they used to say, tell me feet around the wires. Not to be able to, the wires, cables, conduit, devices there are sustaining strength and protecting fixtures as necessary along the public right of ways.
No, I, if they were running underground, we have to give a, a complete excavation permit for that. I don't remember any underground being discussed in any of these permits with COOP.
They haven't written that one, change in the moment.
But these were all overhead, the existing lines are just a, a moving of poles.
But that's the way it should be written in here, Kenny. They've changed the way they've set these up.
I'd have to pull out an old one, Virgil, and actually start doing a comparison against them. I, I guess I just didn't pick that part of it up that you're picking out.
I don't mind. I know even up where I am, it's, um, seven feet on each side of the wires. Doesn't mention anything about underground or anything else. Mine's underground, but I own it. But it doesn't mention anything about underground. It's just the wires in the air.
Get a hold of that. Any further discussion? I'll hold the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Vote in affirmative. Four, one name. Town administrator will get a letter from, no, from the town attorney stating yes or no. We're going to move on to number eleven, which is oil and propane approved for twenty-twenty-one. Back here, the state that the bids were out, the general finance office have put those proposals out there, plus proposals for oil and propane. Had several come in. You had C N Brown, you had Rhymes, you had Eastern Propane, and one company that said they would not be interested in participating.
This is recommendation C N Brown.
Yeah, C N Brown for oil and Eastern for propane down at the, the same vendors we currently use.
Why aren't we going with Rhymes? But oil too, a dollar sixty-nine instead of a dollar, two dollars.
So, um, because Rhymes has a one-hundred-gallon minimum, and we don't do that for welfare clients. We do a fifty-gallon minimum. We ran into the same problem last year as well.
Fifty gallon minimum?
And C N Brown will do a fifty gallon.
So the whole town's going to pay more for oil for your welfare? So we've got to pay more for our town buildings because we've got however many welfare people?
Well, C N Brown oil is one-seventy-one.
Oh, C N Brown, when you need to lose the rest of the taxpayers, an extra ten cents a gallon.
Rhymes is one-sixty-nine-nine, so one-seventy, so it's a penny difference.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Holt? Yeah, I read that hundred gallon for, uh, welfare. Most companies won't go up, but the other issue is, if somebody's out of heat oil, it doesn't, and they don't have the money. Five, uh, fifty gallons of heat oil, they only ten gallon, five, ten gallon buckets. That ain't even gonna last no more.
You burn, you burn about four gallons a day, five gallons a day if it ain't real cold.
So, I don't know.
Well, I have to agree. I would, with that personal experience with Rhymes, I would never have Rhymes delivered my store again, nor my home.
Well, I use them, and I have, I've had nothing but great luck with them.
Twenty years I've used them to appropriate the store in the last year when I decided to go out to bid and ask the bids. They gave me more of a runaround. Seventy cents in my propane because I was leaving. To me, they're, they're bad practice since they got so big in the state of New Hampshire, they messed up on billing practices. They'd send you an invoice from twelve months ago, expect you to pay it. I'd have to sit there and send my bookkeeper back the twelve months worth of records showing that we paid them. I use Irving now, Judge President's Irving in here, but I have no problem with direct relation C N Brown for one penny more, and also with Eastern for the propane.
Well.
Rhymes, if you want to put Rhymes in there, I will vote no against them.
These two vendors have been very good to the town over the years.
You like Irving, and I've had nothing but headaches with Irving.
Well, it's just like doctors and lawyers.
Yeah.
Ford Chevrolet, dog.
Exactly right.
Just like a bottle of Budweiser, a bottle of shooting. So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We approve the recommendation of C N Brown for the oil and Eastern propane, Eastern for the propane.
How much does the town use in oil?
I don't know off the top of my head. We've got quite a few buildings that do use oil. We use oil. The fire station uses oil.
I think that two cents is going to add up quite a bit. When you're talking thirty, forty, fifty thousand gallons.
One thousand, two hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
You're talking, uh, one point, what do we use, whole percent?
What do we use, about thirty thousand gallons? At least.
All our, all our oil, all our oil consumption in all town buildings has been down over the last three years. Because each year we are, when the budget comes in, we reduce the oil budget down.
Wait a minute. It's down because we put these in and they're using these and running the electric bill up.
That, that's agreeable.
They're not using it, it's like you're supposed to.
I agree.
But yeah, but the other thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, Rhymes didn't bid the kerosene. Do we use that much kerosene?
Kerosene is more for the welfare department, because some of the folks still have monitors or outside tanks.
Yeah, we don't have any town buildings that use kerosene. I don't.
I don't know. I just see it's on here.
We don't have any outside tanks? You don't have any outside tanks?
Not that I'm.
West half fire stations moved inside? Yeah, I just think two, you know, when you start talking thirty thousand gallons, two cents is going to be a lot of money.
Well, twenty-twenty-one oil will be twelve thousand gallons, a fixed rate, one-point-seven-one. So if you times that by.
It's a fee.
Looking at two-hundred-and-forty dollars. The motion is made by Mr. Holt.
I'll second it.
Ward the bids.
As presented.
We were seeing Brown, Eastern, C N Brown for oil and Eastern propane for propane. Twenty-twenty-one to twelve thousand again, C N Brown. Motion is made for C N Brown, Eastern propane. Seconded by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? Hold the board. Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Affirmative, three, one against. Mr. McDonald being against. I shouldn't use the name who's on.
No. Well, it should be on the.
Just in case they don't. I think I was asked that at a couple of meetings.
Yeah, it's out of the record anyway.
So after that, gentlemen, move on. The whole business being them, select these reports, Mr. Holt. Mr. Whitman?
Uh, Old Home Week Committee has not met since our last meeting. We're looking at a meeting date, I believe, of the fourteenth of July. But I can tell you the status right now. Next would be to go with the car show and the food trucks, and I'm not quite sure how the food trucks would be arranged at this point. And we are right now. Now, if, um, I had thought you didn't think a chicken barbecue would go, but then I've heard from one of your members that maybe they do like a takeout thing.
So as far as the chicken barbecue goes, that's an association event. The only thing I wasn't sure about was how much planning they need to get it done.
Right.
And that they come up with one of the emergency. The association has a meeting tomorrow, so.
Okay, because we were thinking it's, it's Old Home Day. If we're just doing the Sunday thing, it's Old Home Weekend if you guys have a barbecue on Saturday. That's where we are right now. I can report more after I make the meeting.
Mr. McDonald?
No, I haven't had a meeting yet until third week.
First emergency meeting today, and it went very well and very smoothly. I think it's a show this one yet. Everything's rolling along. All reports being open for the first week were very well. They're very positive. Glad to see it open. The family that we hired to go down front has done a very well professional job. Tax collectors happy. Everything's moving on slowly and smoothly. I hope, thank you, we will have updated expenditure reports up to the end of June. Talking with Lisa. She's very happy and impressed with the amount of tax revenue that has come in. Twelve million dollars, I think she's only seeing about two million right now at this point. So the revenues have been very good coming in.
Thank you to the people.
Yes, and thank you to the taxpayers. I did want to let you know that, that I did talk to Lisa about that. She was very happy with what she's seen come into revenue. That's all I have for my report. Want to turn over to the town administrator. I think she told me earlier she didn't have anything to put up this week. Think she pulled one out of her hat. Yes, two little, two little things.
Thank you. I have two things, and they are kind of related. Um, the first one is the Old Home Week fireworks. The Old Home Week, um, committee did, um, issue a cancellation on that, so I'm bringing it to your attention for informational purposes only. But in relation, because there was no way to ensure social distancing down in the bay when the crowds would stretch. Same thing with the July Fourth.
I don't know, but they had the hell of a July Fourth fireworks down there.
They're close to taxpayers and anything except for police department chasing them around.
About ten families set them off, and they, they were nice and considerate.
Thank you to those families, but I'm, and thanks for closing them off at ten-thirty so I can get up at four in the morning and rest.
And if you go on the computer, it's against the law in Alton Bay to have fireworks.
Yeah.
Or in Alton.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the second thing is, at the last meeting, you had asked.
That was an ordinance. She's still, she's talking a new subject now.
You had asked, uh, for, um, a way to find some money to fix the town boat launch. And in your binder in the back pocket, have an email from our finance manager. Um, and the money from the fireworks that were not, will not be set off in August will cover the town, the town, uh, boat launch repairs that are needed.
How much was saved from the July Fourth? It's fourteen thousand in July, and I think it was only ten thousand dollars in Old Home Week, I think.
To deposit to them. I think it was for fifty percent.
You asked them to hold that deposit. I remember seeing, that's something that Selecton will have to encumber this year where we put a deposit out for this. where we put a deposit out for this year, we're not going to use it till next year. So you want to put that on the line?
Yep.
That we've already paid for deposit, that we're keeping that money, we're going to even though it's kind of expended now.
Well, actually, no, we don't have to encumber that because they have the check. We sent them a check.
And we should have a letter back from them stating that they have received our deposit from 2019, not 2020 to go towards 2021 fireworks.
We do have correspondence.
We do.
Okay. So I'm just bringing this back to you. You asked for a way to find money, and this is it.
And we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Roberts, I think, on the final, what a total cost of the project would be. Is that correct?
Yes, to find out about a marine company to do the work.
And do the diving, correct?
Yep.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for her on that? All right. Do you have anything else for us now?
I do not.
You do not? Okay, thank you. Move on to approval of July, June 29th, 2020, bring another minutes. Take a motion.
I move we accept the minutes, uh, June 29th as presented.
Second.
Motion, favor, Mr. Holt, to approve the June 29th, 2020 minutes as submitted, second by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? If not, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Moving on to non-public.
I have a.
I have to read that in a special way, correct?
Well, what I wanted to state was that the board has previously made a motion to not divulge items number one and two.
Yes, ma'am.
And number three has been released, and I think everything should remain that way.
I think one and two, why can't that be released? Fund request is part of the records.
Because the individual's name is used, and then you have medical records involved.
Oh, I see the name, okay.
By the issue. It belongs to him, yeah. As far as number two, that also has to deal with, that also includes, says individuals. That's why it needs to be sealed.
Yeah.
Said we had already released it. That's the new town called Greeter. Should not say Greeter now because she has accepted.
How's that working, Luke?
Very well.
Looks good, Johnny.
Very pleasant, very pleasant individual.
Like you.
I mean, that's, that's true. It's true. The young lady's name is Katie Wood. Very nice. Made sure I didn't take any sugar that day while I came in, so. She still treated me with professionalism.
Do you need a motion on these minutes?
Yes, they do. As is, as was approved and sealed. Would that be, there's a special way I have to do this.
So they've already sealed.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do anything about that. They're sealed, and they remain sealed until you unseal them. All you need to do is approve as written.
Do you need a motion to approve a non-public session as submitted?
We move.
I can, by Mr. Holt. Any discussion? I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes? Mr. Holt?
Yes. Approve their minutes. You've got to reseal them.
Do we need to reseal those minutes?
You do.
No, no.
You do.
It's already, you come up with this question every week. Can you get legal adjournment, legal opinion on this again, of course, next week, put this one to all the rest because we had already sealed.
So we've already approved.
That was satisfied, Mr. McDonald's, or mine, either way.
These, these haven't been approved yet. So you're just approving them to, they're still on a draft form.
Form, yeah. We approved them.
And we approved them by resealed.
Resealed. Because they weren't approved before. You have to reseal them once you approve.
So if we, if we can get a legal opinion on this.
That's what, that's what them lawyers were talking about, but I explained to you.
Okay.
Moving on to the consent. Your own names and everything. We had that. The line board.
That's what it was on is to make sure that you approve the minutes and the non-pubs and everything else the right way.
All right, moving on. Nothing else, we'll run the consent agenda approval, that one item from the assessing department, timber tax.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion to make by Mr. Donald, approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Vote for Sam Furman. This point, any discretion or action on requests of appointments being done? We do have a non-public session, gentlemen, underneath R S A 91 dash a colon three, paragraph two, A and E. I have a motion, a second to go into non-public session.
Second.
I'll hold the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. We are now in a non-public session.
At five minutes.